Is this an action item? Is this a first? Is that an action item?
It's not in the property.
No, it should be five, it should be five point. No, it's 5.3.
Okay, we will call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Here's the part where we'll seek a motion to for the consent agenda, is that correct Heidi?
Yep, you're good.
Okay.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, a motion by Moulton, second by Iverson. Now, I need some refreshing of.
Any notation of conflict of interest?
Are there any notations of conflicts of interests? Hearing none.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Really stumbled through that one.
Good job.
Okay, well, we're still getting used to this this way that's supposed to help us be more efficient. Alright, so we have our motion, we have our second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, our consent agenda has been approved. Are we able to move then to item 2.5 for the financial report? Or is it straight to the discussion items?
You are good Stuart, I'll take it from here.
Okay.
Alright, perfect, a small amount of tax proceeds was received in the funds of general capital outlay and special education. State aid official enrollment counts were confirmed at month end and therefore state aid will be adjusted next month in consideration of actual versus estimated counts. The ending cash position of 6.4 million in the general fund reflects a decrease when compared to the prior year. Special education saw an ending cash position of 1.2 million and is slightly higher than last fiscal year. Activity in the K-12 nutrition fund increased with the replenishment of inventory. This fund's ending cash position of 549,000 reflects an anticipated decrease due to the spend down plans in the previous year. Lake Area Tech collected tuition and fees in relation to the first semester. Contributions from the foundation were received in the amount of $3 million, resulting in revenue exceeding expenditures for the month. This fund's ending cash position of 8.8 million reflects an intended decrease over the previous two years. As construction in progress takes place on the diesel expansion in Archway, this fund will maintain a steady decline. LATC Enterprise Funds of Nutrition Services, Bookstore and EduCare had expected activity, with all maintaining a healthy balance to support operations. The bookstore ending cash balance of $204,000 is down compared to the previous years due to the timing of purchasing substantial tool inventory in support of programs. This balance will increase as the students and programs purchase their needed inventory. Financial aid reported over 1.7 million in federal funds to accommodate grants and financial assistance to LATC students. In the Employee Benefit Trust, the claims and administrative costs slightly exceeded the premiums during the month. September payroll was the first run of increased premium to the plan. This fund's ending cash position is below the previous year. I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Okay, thank you Heidi. Alright, we will move to discussion items with Lake Area Tech and we'll see if there's anyone here from the public to speak on agenda or non-agenda items. Hearing none, we'll move to item 3.2 with the work session. And welcome President Sanderson.
Good evening. Just a quick reminder for all of you that on November 2nd, we will gather together with the Strategic Advisory Council for Lake Area Tech for a joint meeting and during that meeting, we will work through what the Board of Technical Education strategic priorities are for the entire technical college system and then talk in relation to what does that mean for Lake Area Tech, so please join us. From noon to 2 on November 2nd at Lake Area Tech and if you'd like to come and tour the new facilities, the progress on the Archway complex, just plan to meet us in the Student Center at 11 a.m. prior to that.
Alright, we'll move to personnel and we'll turn it over to you.
Very good. Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like a little leeway to recognize one of our staff members. Last week at the South Dakota Nurses Association meeting, one of our instructors, Rhonda Stangle, was recognized as the South Dakota Nurse of the Year and so she asked that we keep it quiet and I figured this was the perfect place to keep it quiet. Very well deserved recognition for her work as an instructor. We've seen several students, former students of hers, speak to the work that she does in the classroom and spoke of her dedication, the way that they were motivated by her work and the way that she built up their confidence, so very deserving of recognition. And Rhonda Stangle, the 2023 South Dakota Nurse of the Year, so if you see her on the street, please help me congratulate her.
Wonderful, congratulations.
Yeah. Let's move into resignations, we don't have any of those for your look tonight. Beyond that, you'll see in your packet a variety of employment adjunct overload and corporate education contracts for your consideration. Recommend your approval of those as they've been presented.
Okay, item 4.1.2, is there a motion to approve as recommended?
I make a motion to approve the contract recommendation and addendums.
Motion by Lor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved, item 4.1.3.
Thank you. In September, the college was awarded a National Science Foundation grant in the advanced technical education area and that grant is going to allow the college to do outreach in the advanced manufacturing field, so think precision machining, welding, robotics and electronics and all of the areas within manufacturing that Lake Area Tech teaches on, outreach to middle school and high schools. So we'll do maker camps and robotics camps with middle school and high schoolers in the region. We're working to reach about 1,000 school, secondary school students and also provide training for middle school and high school instructors, so we'll be able to train about 100 high school teachers through these funds and then provide upskill training for 60 workers who are currently in the advanced manufacturing field. So over the next three years, the college will house this grant and what I'm asking for tonight is your approval for authority to hire the grant manager, the person who will oversee and lead all of the grant activities over the next three years. The funds for that position are all within the awarded grant from the National Science Foundation. I'll stand by for any questions that you might have.
Is there a motion to approve the authority to hire?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Rosman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lor. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved, we'll move to property with item 4.2.1.
Thank you. Back last winter, I believe it was in February, the board gave us approval to move forward with architectural and engineering work to remodel our dental assisting program. Many of those facilities and equipment operatories have been around for several decades and they need a refresh, both from a technology and a facility standpoint and so that work has been completed and we are ready to move forward with a bid on construction. It's anticipated that that renovation project will cost about 1.5 million dollars. We would seek bids over the course of this fall and look to start construction in the spring and go through the summer so that by next fall, the dental assisting program will be back in renovated facilities. So recommend your approval of our authority to bid the dental remodel project.
Is there a motion to approve as recommended?
I move that we approve authority to bid the dental assistant remodel as presented.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That motion's been approved, item 4.2.2.
This item is consideration of a multi-engine flight training agreement with Rig and Flight Service in Madison. This service agreement, training agreement, will allow our aviation pilot students to go down to Madison, train on a multi-engine plane in Madison and then go through their multi-engine checkride while they're there at Rig and Flight Services. So each of our students that graduates from the pilot program has about 10 hours on multi-flight and that gives them more marketability as they exit the program. I'll stand by for any questions that you might have on the agreement.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved, item 4.2.3, consider the equipment bid for the welders.
Thank you, this is an item that will be funded by the Governor's Office of Economic Development Equipment Grant. We went out to bid for welders and AIOX welding came back, meeting all the specifications for 13 welders. The bid price is $65,382 and recommend your approval of that bid.
Is there a motion to approve as recommended?
I move approval of the AIOX welding bid as presented.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved, we'll move to item 4.2.4 with the consider the equipment bid on 3D printers.
Very good, we went to bid for seven 3D printers for the robotics program and there are two companies that we would like to award bids to. For three printers, we would like to award a bid for B9 Creations to purchase the three printers for a total of $74,913.71 and then the four additional printers to Volterra for a total of $46,624.94. Those bids meet all of the specifications and that lot of printers will also be funded with our equipment grant.
Is there a motion to approve the 3D printer bids?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton, questions, comments?
Sounds like a lot of fun.
3D printers.
Absolutely.
Very nice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's approved, we'll move to item 4.2.5.
Very good, this is a consider equipment bid request for battery operated tools in the building trades program. Acme Tools came back with a bid that met all specifications, again, these tools would be grant funded through GOED and the total price on that bid was $99,981.03. Recommend your approval of that bid.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the Acme Tool bid as presented.
Motion by Moulton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Iverson. Questions, comments?
I'd like to have a tour of all those power, battery operated power tools.
We can get a guest speaker in for a class creator too.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's approved, we'll move to item 4.2.6 with the consideration of equipment lease agreements.
Thank you, before you are two lease agreements, one for heavy equipment operator program and one in the diesel technology program. Within the HEO program, we are seeking an agreement with Transsource for an excavator. The lease would be for nine months at $1,000 per month, so a huge discount to make that program as low cost as possible for our students. And then on the diesel side, the agreement would be with Kibble Equipment, a 10-month lease at zero cost for a John Deere tractor in the technology program. Seek your approval as presented.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Uh, so moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved, we will move to the surplus resolution consideration.
Thank you. Before you is a resolution containing a list of surplus property between our robotics program and automotive technician program. Some of the items before you have seen their better life and we're proposing to surplus for disposal. There are a few items on the list that have some useful life, just aren't useful as an instructional tool at this point and we would like to put those up for sale on surplus. Ask for your approval of the resolution as presented.
Is there a motion to approve as recommended?
I move approval of the resolution for surplus as presented.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved, item 4.2.8.
Before you is a change order for $1,428 on the precision machining roof project. At the August board meeting, you all approved the roofing project over precision machining and welding. As they were working on that roof project, found some damaged insulation and so this change order is simply to take out that damaged insulation and replace it so that we've got a good and functioning roof with good insulation under it. Ask for your approval as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's approved, item 4.2.9.
Thank you. This resolution before you is to consider a resolution for naming rights of our expanded diesel facilities. This fall, as you know, we opened up brand new facilities in our diesel program, about 28,000 square feet and that new expansion houses some of our general diesel instruction and the tech knowledge John Deere program. So within the tech knowledge program, technicians are trained for Kibble Equipment. Kibble Equipment is part of a larger company called Brant Holdings and the Kibble Equipment family has 22 dealerships across Iowa, Minnesota, Nebraska, North Dakota and South Dakota, including here in Watertown. That parent company of Kibble, like I said, Brant Holdings Company, Deere Division, made the lead donation for the diesel building expansion. And in honor of that donation and the memory of the founder, the president, the chairman of Brant Holdings as a company, his name was Ace Brant, we're proposing in the resolution before you to name the diesel expansion the Ace A. Brant Diesel Center. With your approval, that name will go on to the facility and I'd like to invite you and the public to join us on Thursday, October 26th at 10 a.m. for the official ribbon cutting on that expansion and take a few minutes to walk through and view the new facilities and all the equipment. Really thank Brant Holdings for their partnership, not just on the diesel expansion facility. They have contributed in very large ways to make sure that we have really strong instructional tools. They provided dollars for tooling for equipment. They've offered low cost and no cost leases like the one we considered tonight and have provided training to our instructors and brought their technicians in to teach side by side with our instructors in different parts of the curriculum, so really appreciate the partnership of Brant Holdings. And with the approval of this resolution, it would be honored to name the facility the Ace A. Brant Diesel Center.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the resolution for naming rights.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson, questions, comments?
Profound thank you to the family and the company.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, we will move to item 5.1, if there's anybody here from the public that would like to speak on agenda or non-agenda items? With that, we'll move to item 5.2, the Northeast Tech High School Report.
Yeah, thank you. We did meet as a Board of Superintendents on September 12th. Kind of regular back-to-school type things with the Northeast group of superintendents. Got an update from Mr. Folick on the start of school schedule, some of that. And then reminder to those who are representing on the board, the full board of Northeast Tech meets on Wednesday, October 18th, 5:45.
We'll move to item 5.3 with Educators Rising.
Yeah, we have Sharice Jensen and Lucy Walker here to give us a little presentation on.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. We have the support of Educators Rising, South Dakota. Travis Laye from Harrisburg is the lead that I kind of work with. I'm Sharice Jensen, I was a former educator in the Watertown School District. I retired in 2022 and just couldn't quite leave it alone. So I'm the teacher leader and this is Lucy, our president.
I'm Lucy Walker, I'm the president of our Educators Rising chapter that started last year. So last year I was nominated and this year I became the president and I'm planning to pursue a career in Spanish education.
Statistics show that almost 60% of teachers teach within 20 miles of where they went to school. And so this means our future teachers are sitting in our classrooms today. Educators Rising is a career readiness organization that encourage, supports and inspires high school students who are interested in pursuing a career in education.
So this is the meeting framework that we use, we kind of adopted it from the state and this is kind of what they give us to run our meetings based off of. So the acronym stands for Teaching, Recreation, Appreciation, Fundraising, Leadership, Education and Service. And so different parts of our meeting will go along with each section of that acronym and so we'll try to include some leadership and appreciation throughout all that we do and all the other pillars.
And they give us standards for our framework and so they want us to be able to understand the profession, learn about students, build content knowledge, engage in responsive planning, use assessment and data and engaging in reflective practice.
So a few of the learning expos that we have been to or plan to go to, so I attended the one at STSU and then we have two more, one at Dakota State University and one at Northern and those are coming up in the following month. And so teacher leaders are taking us to those and then they're free events hosted by the South Dakota State Colleges. And we're able to experience the university, they host breakout sessions as well as network with other future teachers. So at the South Dakota State University one, there were over 200 students there, so it was really cool to see all of those students there and be able to talk to them and hear what they're passionate about, so.
We also attended a teacher leader training where the state officers led activities with the students and gave you a great idea of what to expect.
So our chapter specifically, there's a few things we have on there. So meetings, we're meeting twice a month every other Wednesday. Our attendance, our last meeting had 18 students that attended the first full group meeting and so that was a great turnout for that. And then Adopt a Classroom is a program we're starting this year and so students will work with teachers and classrooms within our district to provide service to a classroom of their choosing and so kind of working with the teacher and the class to provide what they need in their classroom and get some experience. And then speakers, we've had members from across the district come and speak to our students to hear about different things that our district is doing and then celebrating teaching. So we plan to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Month and offer activities to make a difference.
And a couple of the things that we're planning, we'd like to have a signing day for senior members who sign their intent to pursue a career in education, like the sports stars. We want to celebrate our teacher, our future teachers. The state convention will be held in Aberdeen on February 28th. We can attend breakout sessions and they do have a competition like the other career groups and so we're learning about that, we're taking baby steps. And the classroom experiences, that's another thing, the students would really like to be able to get in the elementary and intermediate school and experience working with students, so those are our future plans. Any questions?
We'd like to open it up to questions.
I'm gonna date myself. Back in the 1950s, we had high school students come into the elementary and teach Spanish. Fourth, fifth and sixth grade and I still remember quite a bit of that Spanish.
Wonderful.
It was a great program.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
I think it's a wonderful, wonderful program, so I'm really glad we, you guys are doing this.
Thank you.
It's been really great to see the support for the club, especially for the students in the club too, just to see how much the teachers support it because I live in a family of teachers, but not everyone does, so.
Do you know how many, I know they, the state organization's been working to try and get as many schools to have a chapter, any idea?
I did see that, did you see it, I wonder if it's 50 now.
Okay, I was just gonna say in the 30s, so that's good. Yeah, I know Travis really works hard at the state level to
Yeah.
Try and, he was on me for quite some time.
How many years had it been in place across the state, is this?
I think it started in 2018.
Yeah, so it's not that.
Yeah. Thanks for coming back and helping out.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we're really grateful that she was willing to step up.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you both, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
On a, on a couple related notes, one of the, just a shout out to our BISCO board. Last year, they helped support Educators Rising for some of their endeavors and I'm guessing there'll probably be a request again at the BISCO level, so the Business Industry School Coalition that meets every month. And then we have one other program, just kind of in the grow your own mode. We have a group of paraprofessionals who are in the state teacher apprenticeship program which is taking paraprofessionals to become teachers. We have Ashley Iverson, Akila Kinnaw, Chelsea Butler, Ashley Strickers and Ashley Renner, all involved in that and they are, the state program helps them kind of fast track their way to, through an education degree. So it takes where they were at with the credits they'd already accumulated and then puts them in touch with either Dakota State or Northern to get there, so they're working on their bachelor's degree in education while they're still maintaining their paraprofessional job with us, so. And then we have local mentors for all of them, Brenda Teskey, Anna Spiegler, Jennifer Flattin, Jennifer Desher and Mallory Hoffman, so a big appreciation to some of our veteran staff for helping with that.
Well, we know that the hiring is obviously a challenge and when we've got different initiatives like this, it's not only important, but needed, so thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to the bills, is there a motion to approve the bills?
Make a motion to approve the bills?
Motion by Lor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions, comments on the bills? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills have been approved, we'll move to personnel, welcome Mr. Barrios.
Alright, got an updated green sheet there. But before you tonight are two resignations and would recommend your approval on those.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Rosman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lor. Questions, comments? Hearing none, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resignations have been approved, we'll move to item 6.2.2 with the contract recommendations and addendums.
Some language changes in here and great little means. Also, the green sheet has an addition for speech-language pathologist services which still are short on SLPs and school sites but this is one way that we can get some additional services here in the district. So recommend that approval of these.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve contract recommendation and addendums.
Motion by Lor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rosman. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved, we'll move to the volunteer list.
Back over here to scroll down to that one. A couple pages of volunteers this year and recommend your approval of these as well.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve volunteer, the volunteer listing for the year.
Motion by Lor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rosman, questions, comments? Just a special note of thanks for all those willing to give of their time and help out in that fashion, it's appreciated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved, we'll move to item 6.3.1 with the consideration of the surplus property resolution.
Yes, this is surplus property for tech equipment and we would put this out for bids to surpluses for sale.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the surplus property resolution.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson, any questions or comments?
Where are these computers coming from, what level?
I believe these are
These are in the high school.
High school.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved and now we will turn it over to Heidi with the financial report.
Yes, the fiscal year ending 2023 annual report of the Watertown School District has been submitted and approved by the Department of Education. The following report provides a briefing of each fund at fiscal year end, tables related to the 2024 adopted budget, federal cares breakdowns for both K-12 and LATC. Also included is LATC's profile, followed by Also included is LATC's profile, followed by their strategic dashboard, found on page thirty-three, and K-12 strategic plan, beginning on page forty-four. The school board has documents in hand for the annual financial report, and please note that the PDF version of this report can be found on the district's website. Pages one through seven of the document include a briefing of each fund at fiscal year end. The financial strategic planning for the district indicates that it is the district's goal to maintain operation of each fund at a level at or above fifteen percent. At fiscal year end, all major operating funds met this criteria, other than special education that has been working to increase fund balance. However, this fund did increase fund balance percent by three percent, leaving the fund balance operation at eleven percent at fiscal year end. The general fund anticipated a use of cash on hand, with actual transactions coming in at a five-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar use of fund balance, leaving the fund at a seven-point-one-million fund balance of twenty-three percent. Future anticipation of this fund notes that, notes at the ending, that FY twenty-four is the last year that the district will receive COVID relief funding. The ending fund balance in the capital outlay fund is noted at just over seven million. This year's budget sets aside funding for phase two of the athletic complex that is currently in the bid process. The special education fund had an ending fund balance on June thirtieth of nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars, an increase of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand dollars from the previous year. This fund balance is eleven-point-six-nine percent of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three expenses, which is a three percent increase from the prior year. As we move forward into the new fiscal year, the district continues to monitor this fund with continued ways to accommodate the needs of its special education students at an affordable means. The financial activity of the Lake Area Technical College Fund reflects an anticipated financial decrease of one-point-three-million. Construction in progress of the archway and diesel projects are reflective of this decline, and activity continues into the fiscal year. Together, these projects are reflective of twenty-eight million dollars in construction costs. The June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three ending fund balance of the LATC fund was seven-point-one-million, and will accommodate cash balance fluctuations created by construction in progress. Other activity noted within the funds includes profit and loss statements within the enterprise funds of both K-12 and LATC, including the operation of K-12 nutrition services, arena concessions, driver's ed preschool, and for LATC, the bookstore, food service, and edicare. Aside from operation in the major enterprise funds, the district also oversees twenty-eight million dollars, as noted on page nine of the report, in custodial and internal service funds, including self-funded insurance and the LATC financial aid fund. This document provides a recap of the previous year, a look into anticipations for two thousand twenty-four, and general information to assist in decision-making for the district. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Page.
This is close. Page thirteen, is that federal grants for the entire district?
Yeah, so page thirteen, this is our schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So this outlines each of the federal funds that the district oversees. So in total, for FY twenty-three, we had fifteen-point-one-million dollars in federal funds. And you'll see that at the bottom of the page there, that grand total.
So is this K-12 plus Lake Area?
Yep, this is both K-12 and Lake Area. So this is what we send to our auditors, and then they audit us based on the schedule of federal awards.
So does Department of Education, do they give you like a schematic or a list of things that you have to provide?
For what?
For this report, Department of Education, do they give you?
Yep. So what we send in to the, to the state for information is all of our fund activity, so in all of our major operating funds. So what they're seeing is all of our revenue operation expenditures, balance sheets. And then they're able to identify what they use it for on the state level. They look at all of our chart of accounts, so how we budget and how we expend those dollars. So they can, they can look at what does Watertown spend for instructional, what do they spend on activities, and then they layer that down. And that's what they send in for different federal reports that they have to do on the state end.
Thank you. Thanks for breaking that down.
Yep.
Heidi, did you say that the COVID dollars are finished up next year? Did I miss something?
This is the last fiscal year. So this current budget year of twenty-three, twenty-four is our last receivable of federal COVID dollars. Lake Area wrapped theirs up last fiscal year, but we are in our last year of using those funds.
Is that similar for every other school then across the country, too?
It would be, yep. They, all schools have until September of two thousand twenty-four to expend all of their COVID relief dollars. Some may have already spent it, just depending on how their budgets have aligned. But this would be September of two thousand twenty-four, would be the last, the last month in which those funds can be expended.
For cash reserves, compared to past years, how are we sitting?
We have been operating at about that twenty-three to twenty-five percent in like the general fund operation. They're pretty similar in years past. We do know, like, we continue to kind of watch those funds because we are above that fifteen percent. But anytime that you are using from your reserves, that's usually continued operation of taking from reserves. So you have to kind of strategically, you know, have that plan in place because you can't take from reserves every year, or that would, you know, decline.
The state sets a certain rate on that, too.
Yeah, so in general fund, a school our size, we can't be over the twenty-five percent cash on hand, which is different than fund balance.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? We'll use this document as well when we have our fall planning meeting on November sixth. We'll use this document in conjunction with different decisions and, you know, just as a way to look at past operation as well. And we would need a motion and a second on this approval.
Is there a motion to approve the financial report?
I move approval of the financial report.
Motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work that goes into this, and appreciate the new look, the new view. It's nice.
It's my marketing strategies.
Yeah, a big thank you to Heidi and her staff. I know Emily Soul is here, too, but they do a great job of this, and it does, looks fantastic.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This motion has been approved. We will now hear second readings of a couple of policies. We'll start with six point five point one.
Yes, on six point five point one, we had one minor change under A. There was a sentence that said, "No attendance at a building where there are daycare centers or younger-age students." We clarified preschool-age students, so that it's indicating if we had a preschool anywhere. So that's the only change to that one. Still recommending approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Salute.
Motion by Rosman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lor. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's been approved. The next second reading, six point five point two.
Yes, just a couple minor changes to BEDH. There were some capitalizations, standards we tried to line up, such as where it was, board president was capitalized. It sometimes was, sometimes wasn't. That was just a, the sample policy we had, did not have that. And then we did change, so item number two, the last section, authority of board president, that said presiding officer. In the first reading, we changed it to line up to board president, the assumption being that whoever is running our meeting is the board president that evening, has the authority to control the meeting during this time. Thought that was easier read and makes more sense. If someone from the public is here, the person running the meeting is the presiding officer, but the board president for that meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the public participation in board meetings.
Motion by Lor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rosman. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion has been approved. We'll move to item six point six point two with the thirteen twenty-eight tens.
Yes, we have two thirteen twenty-eight tens for your approval this evening.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the thirteen twenty-eight tens?
Motion by Rosman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lor. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's been approved. We will now review the open enrollments.
Yes, one open enrollment for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the open enrollment.
Motion by Lor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rosman. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion has been approved. Item six point six point one. Okay, we will move to the communications and hear from Dr. Danielson.
Yes, just a couple of things. We have not had any formal student-staff recognition yet, but a couple of things you should be aware of that we hope we can get them here in November. Lauren Geier, a student at Watertown High School, is a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist.
Wow.
And so this was announced in September. There were more than sixteen thousand semifinalists across the nation. And so they have the opportunity to continue in the competition for some seven thousand one hundred and forty National Merit Scholarships worth nearly twenty-eight million dollars in scholarship money. To be, so just a little bit about this, to be considered for a merit scholarship award, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level of competition, and about ninety-five percent of the semifinalists are expected to attain finalist standing. And approximately half of the finalists will win a National Merit Scholarship, earning the merit scholar tile, so, title. So that's a great deal for Lauren, and a big congratulations to her. And then just last week, the Watertown Boys Golf Team completed, competed at Brandon for the state championship and came away victorious. So we, our Boys Golf Team of Jake Olson, Caden Ryland, Jonathan Lake, Jaden Solheim, Ty Leonard, and Gabe Norberg, coached by Corey Neal and Ryan Neal, were the state champs for double-A golf, Boys Golf. And our very own Jake Olson was the medalist. So great for the Watertown Boys Golf Team. And like I said, I hope we can get them in here at the November when we start having a few more of student-staff recognitions. And then just a couple of things that you should be aware of that probably will be coming your way here in the, in the near future. Heidi mentioned the November sixth Fall Planning Meeting, the school board. That'll be here at five-thirty. We, the last Friday in September is the date that the state pulls our fall enrollment count. We have not got the official numbers yet, so should have an update on that soon. And then we did submit an attendance grant with the state of South Dakota. We have not heard that. That's a November sometime hopeful announcement of that, but we're looking forward to doing some work with our attendants. You'll probably start seeing some kind of importance of attendance campaign rolling out soon. So attendance matters. And then I know President Sanderson didn't mention it, but there's still probably time, seven o'clock tonight. The Fierstein series is taking place over at Lake Area, seven o'clock. Speaker this evening is Erin Brockovich. I looked it up this weekend, it was a two-thousand movie. And it's not Julia Roberts, it's actually Erin herself coming to speak over at Lake Area.
Nice. All right, thank you. Does anyone have anything to report to the superintendent? Hearing none, we will seek a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Motion by Iverson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Molton. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
He must be bringing the P S A T again.